Out and down here before I start.
Four, three, two, one.
There we go. Six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Got a lot to do, so we'll get started because this is our first meeting, post stay-at-home 2.0. So Diane, who do we have on the call?
We have Mike Jewitt, Chief Elquino, Tricia, Pete, Tina, Jack, Charlie, Larry, Nancy, yourself, and me.
Okay, the usual suspects. So Trish, if you would be so kind to give us the rundown on everything.
Sure. So before I tell you about what has happened since Thursday, about 5:30 tonight, we got a message that is just, it's a state update. I'll read what pertains to us that you might be interested in. It just says Department of Health and Human Services will be offering testing for anyone that calls the COVID-19 office requesting a test. So this is new, they haven't done this before. If someone desires a test, regardless of your symptomology, or if they believe they have been exposed to COVID-19, they may now be tested using the standard order. Proactively contacting businesses as well as long-term care facilities to even see if they want a clinic at their facility. And will continue to have the fixed locations that we have currently. We have locations in Claremont, Lancaster, Plymouth, Tamworth, and Rochester. The other part that I wanted you to know is Department of Health has updated now the script. They've got this automatic script on the 211 line and say they will no longer be screening requests for testing. Anyone who calls them about testing will be instructed to call the following number, and it's 603-271-5980, to be connected with a testing clinic. So again, this is new. Before, you know, if you didn't have symptoms, you couldn't request to be tested. Now you can be. They also talked about, and you've heard a little bit on the news, of plasma donations from recovered COVID-19 patients. If you do know anyone that maybe is recovered from COVID, they're very interested in testing their plasma. They said that individuals must have a prior verified diagnosis of COVID-19 but are now symptom-free and fully recovered from COVID-19. They must be at least seventeen years old and weigh 110 pounds. Oh my God, I haven't weighed that in years. Additional weight requirements apply for doctors, I mean, sorry, for youngers, age eighteen or younger. They must be in good health, generally feeling well, and even if they have a chronic condition, that is okay. The other part that I thought was important to us is there are many companies offering discounts as well as deals for healthcare workers. This website pulls together several companies that are offering deals, and in most cases, you need to show your employee badge. So again, that was fresh off the press, about 5:30 today, so I wanted to start out with that. Okay, now the calls. I did email everyone some information, the new orders that came out. The school, new school requirements was order number thirty-eight. Order number thirty-nine was to allow agents to consent to clinical trials. And the big one was number forty, which I tried to email everybody that's typically on these calls. That big one is, I don't know, forty-five pages long, I think. And it's got the main updated emergency order, which is modifying our number seventeen. It has Exhibit A, which is essential sectors that are continuing to operate, like police, fire, emergency management, EMS. Exhibit B gives the universal guidelines for all New Hampshire employers and employees. And if you remember last week, I forget when, I did email the universal guidelines draft to all the selectmen, Nancy and Diane. They continued, they didn't change anything. It's still the draft and it's still dated, the twenty-eighth of April. And then Exhibit C is guidelines for business organizations and sectors that are continuing to operate. And Exhibit D is guideline for businesses, organizations, and sectors who are resuming all or part of their operations. I also attached a link, hopefully you guys were able to open it, the stay-at-home 2.0 as a zip file. Clearly, the first one that we're dealing with is campgrounds, but I thought you might wanna see all the other 2.0 areas. And they're broken down by like hospitals, parks, you know, hairstylists and so forth. So if you can't open it, let me know and I'll tell you where to find it. I mean, I hope you help, this helps all of you. Also, if you want to see any of the emergency orders, they're on the EMD page on the town website. I've tried to keep them all there. So that being said, the Department of Health said the shipment of PPEs came in. They're unloading in the inventory. And thanks to Larry, he picked up another 2,000 masks today. We've also been afforded a grant for crisis counseling, and we have more information coming soon. Assistant Commissioner Perry Plummer said we're working on providing masks to businesses and agencies that are going to be reopening. The shipment of the PPEs went out to the Veterans Administration, and we had two more planes that are gonna be arriving in the next couple of weeks. Our alternative care sites are still operating, and we do not have plans to break them down yet. Senator Shaheen, boy, I gave her a promotion. Senator Shaheen wanted to thank everyone for everything they're doing. She said that she's doing everything she can in Washington to support what's going on with the first responders and their efforts. She said they're working on more funding for state and local governments. She also spoke to the municipal association and the governor, and is aware of what the towns need. They also said they've been very helpful forwarding requests of PPE. And she has also requested through FEMA, additional funding, I should say, from the Stafford Act. We had a fire department said that a person on their department tested positive, but his case was removed when he came back as a negative. But then, for some reason, it got re-added. And they wanted to know what's up with that. And the fire marshal said they'll have to have a conversation, and they're gonna try to sort it out with public health. Because clearly, we don't want things going back on and off because it's completely skewing our numbers. Local ambulance service said they submitted their task and only got half of the delivery, which by the way, that's happened to us. We've been asking for thermometers for, I don't know, it seems like months. And both chiefs have also reached out to different vendors, and we still can't get them. And that's what he basically said, we're getting some of our stuff, but not the rest of it. Border Patrol said they're doing testing on first responders, but they wanted to know if they could utilize the convenient MD. And they said absolutely, and they could call, and they gave a number for this border patrol to call. As far as planning goes, you probably heard Sunday there was a protest against the stay-at-home order at the State House. However, it occurred without incident. No law enforcement action needed to be taken at the State House. And however, they are directing patrol to stay in that area as well as the seacoast, since that's where most of the programs seem to be. Friday, now remember, this is a report from Thursday night to today. So Friday, they wanted us to know that it was the state's highest one-day testing total. However, the accumulation of our numbers since Thursday night are 2,518 new cases. That's up by 372 since Thursday night. They said we have 1,017 cases recovered, again, since Thursday night. That's up by thirty-seven. And unfortunately, we have eighty-four deaths, which is up by fourteen since Thursday night. Most of those are from long-term care facilities. Military support is working with Department of Health and Logistics, again, to support the mask distribution to businesses. They're pushing out over a million masks to New Hampshire businesses. However, we're not getting, just understand, hospitals, long-term care facilities. Is someone talking to me? No? Okay. So again, it doesn't mean that it's available to the first responders. They wanted us to know that the Civil Air Patrol is conducting traffic assessments and flight of the trailheads and the seacoast area. There's been no changes in the rail or mass transit. As far as the airports go, Manchester's reporting fourteen flights operating with no cancellations. United Airlines has suspended all operations out of Manchester effective today. And they said this is due to the decreased demand and has a tentative date of July sixth to resume operations. Portsmouth has two flights operating with no cancellations. As far as our first responders, we have twenty-two first responders that have tested positive. Forty-seven are being tracked as quarantined. Twenty-two of those are fire departments of the ones being tracked, twenty, a police department, and twenty-two members are in alternative housing. They've had some search and rescue calls. The biggest offenders, or I should say, the calls, not necessarily offenders, seem to be ATV accidents. There's also been, well, all the new emergency orders that I shared. The fire marshal said they switched first responder testing to a private lab. And now they're a little backed up, while the public lab now seems to have cleared their backlog, which if you remember, was completely reserved before. So they hate to make it confusing, but they're bouncing back and forth. They're pausing on the Department of Justice grant until we see where we are with the FEMA reimbursement money. So again, they're looking for additional money in all areas. One of the comments was, "Our town has a large campground. It has opened, and they are not social distancing. What can be done?" What did the governor mean? You'll read in the order, that's why I wanted to send that order to all of you. When the governor said members were allowed to visit, does that mean even out-of-staters? And the answer was, unfortunately, we don't have a clear answer for you, other than that they need to be social distancing, and they're gonna reach out to the governor's office to get better clarity. We had a fire department that said regarding the outside dining permits and assembly permits. Permitting will remain the same, but they said restaurants need to comply with the governor's order. Then they said, "Well, if a restaurant puts out a large tent, is that considered outside dining?" And the answer is, "If the large tent has sides, then it's indoor dining and not allowed." An EMD said, "Are gatherings of ten or more outdoors now permissible? The stay-at-home order has been extended till May thirty-first, so no, not ten or more." Police chief said, "Our campgrounds open for New Hampshire residents only." Again, referring to his order, what does members mean in the governor's guidelines? And their answer was, "We will find out for you and get back to you." Another town said, "We have had New Hampshire versus out-of-state residents actually assaulting each other. They're very concerned. What are we supposed to do about it?" And their answer is, "We'll pass this along to the governor." They had a fire department that said, "Would a restaurant with outdoor seating be considered a gathering?" And their answer was, "As long as everyone is social distancing, we would not consider it a gathering." And then a police chief also said, on the governor's emergency order forty, "Does it apply to state and local county governments?" It references number three in that order about businesses providing essential services, and how do they have to comply with the universal business guidelines? Again, I sent that. Does this apply to our local government? And the answer is, "We'll find out and get back to you." So again, that's why I sent you the emergency order, because a lot of questions are coming out of it, and it's getting a little bit confusing for people. And that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Lots going on. One thing I did wanna point out, that if anybody was watching at three o'clock today, the governor announced, and I really have to say bravo for the governor, that he's going to be giving stipends to first responders. So I saw police-fire EMTs on there. So I'm not going to quote the amount, because I don't wanna get it wrong. But I'm not sure if the two chiefs who are on the call saw that today. Did you guys happen to hear that?
No. I'll touch base with Trish and Larry in the morning. I did not see that. I was out of the office today.
Okay, cool. So for the, you know, just for the public's benefit, the reason I think this is great because what he's going to do is use the money that's coming from the, you know, federal funds to give the first responders kind of like a bonus. And it does include part-time first responders, from what I heard. So I can tell you that this board has discussed, and I'll just say discussed, we didn't vote or anything like that. We had discussed trying to do something for our first responders, but as everybody who's a taxpayer in this town understands, we have limited resources. So I appreciate the state taking the lead on this and trying to do something because these men and women are on the front lines out there all the time. So I was happy to hear about that today. I do wanna put this out to the board because, you know, stay-at-home 2.0 essentially has an end date, or a proposed end date, of May thirty-first. So I would think, and the board can tell me if you don't agree, but I would think we're not gonna be changing our current status as far as town building goes at this point. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Agreed. As Kate.
So we're kinda doing what we've been doing since, I think it was March seventeenth, until, you know, we hear anything else. But you can, for those who've reviewed what Trish sent out and the guidelines and stuff, it's quite clearly kind of a little bit of a shot in the arm to get businesses back and going, and people hopefully back on the job. But it's not a full, you know, opening yet. And I think that's probably the prudent way to go. Let's wait and see, see what happens. And, you know, for what it's worth, you're gonna have these other states in the country that have totally opened up, and we'll see what happens there. And, you know, those would be the lessons learned.
Chair, can I throw something out there, Matt?
Jack, go ahead.
The news, the news tonight at nine o'clock said that first responders are gonna receive $300 a week. How long that's gonna last, I didn't say. But that's what it said tonight on the five o'clock news. That's from the governor's office.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna put any numbers out there because Diane's taking the minutes, and then people will quote me on it. But you can quote, that was Jack Kozak, K-O-Z-A-K. But I would...
You know, I noticed, the only thing I'm disappointed in, he didn't mention the transfer station workers who are putting their lives on the line every day.
I agree.
And I noticed that too, and all I can say to transfer station workers is, we appreciate what you're doing, and, you know, that's the best we can do for now. You know, our resources are limited. Who knows what the future may hold in terms of that, but we certainly...
I can mention it to, apologize. I'm gonna mention it to Senator Sherman too, see if he can do anything. Or at least, we'll write a letter or something.
The, yeah, you never know. Governor said it again today. Things change day by day. It's still the case, right? It's broken record, but that's the case. By the way, and this is for Chief Elquino and Chief Jewitt's benefit is, again, I'm not gonna quote the number because I don't wanna get it wrong, but the governor has made an allowance for part-time first responders. So it's not just full-timers that are part of the program. So make sure you guys check into that, because many of your people are considered part-time. Real quick, I wanted to touch upon something we touched upon last week. And I spoke to the bookkeeper today, and just got some clarity around it. And Diane's gonna send out an email. But essentially, as the board agreed upon last week, effective with this pay period, actually, we're gonna be looking, we're using the same time cards, so there's no change to the time sheets. Time sheets are the same that we've used forever. But we're gonna be looking to make sure the department heads have their COVID, displays COVID interrupted hourly people put in the comments field, COVID-19 did not work X amount of hours. So that'll be different than those folks. I always use Larry and Trish as an example. You know, a hundred percent of their hours are on COVID-19 right now, so they're putting that in there. Because we believe, we hope, fingers crossed, we're gonna get reimbursement for that type of work. However, we still have that handful of people who cannot come to work, cannot work because we are not, those buildings aren't open. So we're gonna be looking for those people to put on their time sheets, COVID-19 did not work. And there'll be an email probably tomorrow morning going out to the department heads to remind them. But that's what we're gonna be looking for.
Matt, this is Diane.
Go ahead, Diane.
I sent the email out already.
So she's way ahead of us, as usual. So it's out there, it should be pretty self-explanatory. But if anybody has any questions, Diane's last name is spelled M-O-R-I-N, right?
I have not seen that. Did you include the board members on that email, Diane?
No, I did not. I just sent it to the department heads. I'll forward it out to you guys after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, could I make a...
Go ahead.
Sorry. Okay, you're not gonna wanna hear this. I didn't see that, so I don't know what that email said. However, I have to tell you, the way the time cards are currently being done is how FEMA, the auditors that audit us with FEMA, and again, I've done this for thirteen years, they never challenge us. I think if we change something after three pay periods, the questions that I'm gonna be asked when we're sitting down with the auditors, "Oh, now why is this now changed from here?" And, I mean, you have no idea. They could say, "Well, you know, the selectmen were trying to make it clearer." "Oh, is it not clear? Should we go back and re-audit everything?" I think this is a real bad idea. I'm not a selectman, I can't vote on it. However, I have done this for thirteen years, and I think it's a problem. The audit that we go through is intense. And they're really comfortable with Larry, Kim, and I, and they basically don't question us because we've been really consistent in what we're doing. So again, you know, I don't know if this is where you were gonna ask for input, but that's my input as the person that's gonna deal with it. Larry may have something to say, and clearly, Kim may have something to say. And I think it's a bad idea. Sorry.
Okay. So last week, we talked about this. So the time for input was probably last week. I did talk to Kim today. Kim is okay with it. What everybody should understand is, we are not looking to, we're trying to measure hours that have not been worked. This has nothing to do with FEMA, these hours. We are going to get reimbursed, we're hopefully gonna get reimbursed for the hours as I described. So I'm open to suggestions on how we can capture correctly the hours that people are not working because of COVID-19.
But we have that, Matt. It's really clear on everyone's time cards. Everyone's doing a really...
It's not clear. Because we have to, the data we've gotten, we've had to reinterpret the data. We're basically looking for a clear differentiator between who's actually working and who is not working. So I'm open to suggestions.
Okay. They're putting it on their comments, though, and I...
They're actually not, though.
I'm sorry, I won't say anything anymore.
No, it's okay. It's, I mean, if people have other suggestions, then let's hear them. Matt? Go ahead, Larry.
Matt, so the only other suggestion I would have is, if you take that one payroll sheet that has two weeks on it, you do the top part as hours worked, and the bottom part with the same date as COVID-19. Instead of turning one in bi-weekly, you have to turn two bi-weekly.
I don't know, what do people think about that? So we'd be having these people turn in two time cards?
Yeah.
The time sheets have two weeks on them. I think Larry's saying, instead of having each week be a forty-hour period, if you will, have the top one be the two-week period for actual hours, and the bottom one be the two-week period for the COVID hours. Or something to that effect.
No, no, no. It'd still be one week each, but the top part would be the actual pay you're getting, and the bottom part will be your COVID hours that you're gonna try to charge.
So one page would be for one week?
Right, so you'd have to turn in two pages, right?
Okay.
Any other suggestions? What's the board wanna do?
Mr. Chairman, Matt?
Go ahead, Chief.
Just, just so the board knows, what we've been doing is, the members that have been doing the duty shifts like they've been doing for the past four years, they do that time per week on a regular time slip, and then on a total separate piece of paper, total separate slip. Any COVID hours, they turn that in on a COVID time slip. And what we do is, I take that time slip, and that's what I turn into Larry and Trish's office every week. So we do two time slips.
It should be noted, the fire department doesn't have any people in this category, the category of not being able to work because of COVID-19. What's the board wanna do?
Wanna see a visual.
Okay.
And you're saying, no matter how we do it, it will not impact any money we get back, this particular thing that Trish mentioned?
So I will say...
Can anyone, wait, can anyone hear me?
Yeah. We heard you, Kate. I don't think anybody had a response, but...
You do.
But the one thing I will say is, you know, we have EMD people here who are very experienced with this FEMA stuff, so we should obviously take to heart what they're saying. But, you know, I'll say it again, that's storms. And this is a pandemic hitting fifty states simultaneously. So I do think, as a taxpayer, I think it's really a shot in the dark that we're gonna get reimbursed for what we think we're gonna get reimbursed. But who knows? We don't know. Uh, but who knows? We don't know. Uh, but the thing to remember is, keeping track of people who are not currently working but charging their time has nothing to do with what we're gonna get reimbursed for. So, I'll say it again. It sounds like we're going back to the drawing board again. Is that what's going on here? I think I've heard Lisa wants to see a visual. Kate, you know, as just said, she wants to make sure we don't affect, uh, do something to affect what we think we're gonna get back. Uh, anybody else on the board have any thoughts?
I, I'm looking at Diane's email, and it, she's showing that the distinction is being made in the comment field, which means it's not gonna be in any reports unless it's able to be entered into a com- the payroll system, which it can't be. I, I'm curious how we're gonna be able to track it without looking at or requiring the bookkeeper to now take these pay sheets and not only enter them into the payroll system, but also physically enter or tally into a separate spreadsheet so that the board can track it. You know what I'm saying?
Lisa, Kim and I are already doing this. We already have a spreadsheet, both Kim and I, and then we compare it.
That's why we should leave it up to the people that have been doing it to continue doing it.
I just think there's a data integrity problem. If you have people who are working COVID nineteen, and people who are not working are entering the same thing in the comments field, to me, that's a data integrity problem.
I definitely, I agree with that, Matt, but I thought the, uh, Trish and them have, have that squared away.
Hey, Matt, so if, if, if you had called, if you, if you would call tomorrow, just out of the blue and say, uh, Tom Sawyer, can you tell me what he were, actual worked hours, what his COVID hours are? They just have to go to that spreadsheet and say, he did a hundred hours of COVID hours at, at home, and he only worked forty hours of actual work time. They can point that out in, in a matter of two minutes, if that's the concern.
That hasn't been my experience, though.
See, Larry, the last spreadsheet, it, it-
Without, without naming names, the last time I heard, I heard, "We think, we don't know." You'd have to talk to somebody to be sure. That's what I got.
In the last spreadsheet that we saw, only identified regular hours, COVID hours, but it did not distinguish COVID hours worked because of COVID versus COVID hours not worked because of COVID.
All right, so that, uh, so now, okay, so I get that. So you, you have two COVID issues. One is, I worked on COVID so we could charge, and then I was sitting at home, and we're charging COVID, hopefully to get that back.
Exactly.
So, no one, no one had brought that to our attention that way? Um, I don't know who Matt talked, I don't know who he talked to about it, but I wasn't aware that that was the, the, um, confusion.
Yeah, we talked about it in the meeting last Monday.
Right, but without the visual, um, we probably didn't read into what, what we're saying today. Where, where the confusion is, is there's two COVID line items. One is actual work, and one is actually at home. That needs to be straightened out.
Yes, that is the clarification that we've been looking for.
So Trish, you follow that? So maybe on the spreadsheet, we need to add another column that says, "At-home COVID and actual work hours COVID," under the person's name that goes straight across.
Yep, I actually have that on my spreadsheet. Kim and I talked about that, so we did differentiate that. So maybe we just need to see an updated spreadsheet, Tricia. Okay, yeah, tomorrow when I go to the office, I'll send it over.
Yeah, but I think the thing we need to see, and hopefully this is, you'll be able to do this if you've got a extra column, is we need to see the clear picture of who is working and who is not working.
Uh-huh.
Because the last time we got it, it, it was presented in such a way that we had to interpret it, and we had to call department heads to get more information to be able to interpret it.
Okay, I, I think mine's clear, but if not, we certainly can talk about it. At least you'll have a visual.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so off with that one. On to, um, anything else COVID nineteen related for tonight?
Um, this is Diane again.
Go ahead.
I have Steven St. Seer on the, uh, phone with us tonight. Um, I had brought up to him, I asked him basically about, um, you know, what he could do to help with the, the transfer station to decrease the number of people that would actually go there, I mean, not people, but vehicles. Um, Steven is on the line, like I said. He did give back to me-
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Steven.
And he did give back to me, and he could increase his number of, of customers if we let him go in on, whenever, whenever the transfer station is open. So I was using an analogy in my head that said, let's say he has, and I don't know, these are just random numbers I'm picking out. Let's say he has twenty customers right now. If we let him go whenever the transfer station is open, which would actually be Saturday and Sunday would be added to his list, and he got twenty more customers, that would be thirty-nine vehicles that would not have to go to the transfer station. I think that's, you know, we were looking a way to help alleviate the congestion, and that might be a good option if you guys want to think about that.
Did Diane, did you figure out which ones were foreign-made cars and which ones were American-made? In your, your algorithm?
I did not. I was actually thinking all pickup trucks, being in New Hampshire.
This is actually, uh, for the uninitiated, so the agreement the board has, right? And Lisa can jump in here if I get something wrong, but the agreement the board has with Mr. St. Seer, it's the first time I ever called him Mr., um, is for only two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, for his service to go in there. The reason was, when we first started this, we didn't know what kind of volume there would be and whatnot. Uh, is that correct, Lisa? Is that what it was?
Uh, that is partially correct. It is not necessarily in agreement with Mr. Seer specifically. He just happens to be the only one that is, um-
Participating.
Making use of this policy, but it is a policy for commercial haulers. And it did, um, limit the times and days, and that was to minimize the volume or the, um, if the hauler was coming too frequently, then that could cause backup of the residents, and we were looking for residents to be able to have basically first dibs.
Okay, so that was our initial intention. That was a couple of years ago. Uh, we now have, you know, seen this program actually be successful, move forward. Um, do you, Pete is on the line, and Jack for that matter, but Pete's on the line. What, what are you guys' thoughts of extending this, at least for a period? We don't even know yet. But what are your thoughts as extending to the other two days of your open?
I, I personally have no problem with it.
And, um, really, as, you know, Diane said, the, the volume of trash doesn't change. It's just the cars not coming in that will probably help these guys. Steve, did, do you wanna indicate to us why you think, uh, your clientele might increase? Are people saying they, are some people just saying they're only interested in weekends? Is that what it is?
Hmm, no, I mean, it, so, um, you know, I'm not really at max capacity yet for Tuesdays, but, uh, you know, I only, I can't do it on Thursday. I, I, I personally, and I know this doesn't affect the policy, but, uh, I personally can't do it on Thursdays. Um, so that really only leaves me Tuesdays, which up until now, it really hasn't been a problem. But, you know, I, the fewer restrictions on me, the more people I can service, and, you know, I, I would eventually want to move on to the weekends, you know? I don't personally, I would, I would be more likely to use a Saturday or Sunday than a Thursday 'cause it's just part of the work week.
Okay, so-
I was mentioning to, uh, Diane that, uh-
Right, but Tuesday and Thursdays were the days picked because they were the slowest two days out of all of the time periods. Saturdays and Sundays are the busiest.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you, Lisa. I agree with you. That's why Tuesdays and Thursdays were picked as opposed to weekends when they're, those are the busiest times. That's right.
Yeah, in fact, I believe it was Pete who recommended those two days way back when.
I believe he did.
So, really, really what it's up to the board to, uh, figure out tonight, if we want, is to decide, what do we want for, you know, a trial period? Do we wanna, do we wanna ease that restriction and include the weekend days for a trial period? Or what, what's everybody thinking? What do we wanna do?
I have a question, please, as a, as a new person. So this, is it the Newton Waste Company we're talking about?
Yes, that's right.
And it's a private, this is a, I'm sorry, just sorry-
We're talking about the trans- the commercial haulers' policy. I'd rather not make it a discussion about a company, but rather about a policy.
So, I get it, I get it, but commercial haulers means, just so I know, that this is stuff that our residents use, and they pick up our trash, or only commercial, like, uh?
Uh, no, no, it's a commercial hauler because they're making money doing the hauling, but they're only allowed to bring Newton residential truck waste into the transfer station.
Okay, so you can, can see, so these commercial haulers, you can call them and pay a fee, and they come get your trash for you? That's what we're talking about, that kind of service?
Yeah, and you pay a fee.
Thank you. Just wanna make sure.
And the commercial hauler must, um, get a permit from the town, and we only allow three permits. So there, there are limitations to control the commercial haulers and how much, um, extra tracking or the transfer station employees have to do of commercial haulers coming in.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to make sure I totally got it.
Yep, limits on the size of trucks and things like that, again, just to control how much waste comes in and to ensure that somebody doesn't get carried away.
This is Diane. Um, Steve did have something else he'd like to ask you two at the same time. Steve, you wanna ask him about the recycling limit?
Uh, I mean, the, uh, the, the big limiting factor for me, um, on Tuesdays is the number of trips I gotta make, or the number of loads. I mean, for me, um, and I, I understand this is not about me or the Newton Waste Company, but, um, for me, uh, I put in the recycling, which is unlimited. I, I put it in the truck bed with the household trash, which is limited to ten loads per week. And I do that because I can't be making two trips to every house in town. And, um, you know, it, for me, it would be, um, more efficient if I had a trailer for the recycling only, since it's unlimited. And, uh, that way I could, uh, fit more household trash in the truck bed to count as a full load. Does that make sense? And so that may also help me increase the max capacity.
So you're, you're asking i- if the policy could be changed or temporarily modified to allow you to pull a trailer as well, and the trailer contain the recyclables, and the truck bed contain the waste?
That's right, for recycling only, since it's unlimited anyway, and wouldn't necessarily count against the ten-load limit.
Right, the recycling doesn't.
So I think what I would do is put a, put a timeframe on this, you know, we start tomorrow or whatever, for like ninety days.
Uh, which days again? Just Tuesdays and Thursdays still, right?
It would be all the days.
No, till close Saturday. And to allow a trailer to haul the recyclables. Pete, what's your opinion on, uh, allowing the trailer?
Absolutely. I, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd work out for him and, and definitely for us.
Yeah, what I always say is, this doesn't change the volume of trash coming into the transfer station because it's coming from our people, our Newton residents, who would come anyway. It just changes, like Diane said, how many vehicles are bringing it in, um, so-
Yeah, and another thing on top of that is, he can have the trash separated from the cardboard. If you have leaky trash getting all over the cardboard, you can't recycle it at that point.
Right. All right, anybody, um, anybody in?
I got an opinion, man.
Charlie, go for it.
Okay, what, I don't, I don't have a problem with this, but I, I'd just like to see it done a little bit differently. Uh, if he's, if he can make it in there on Tuesdays, let him come in on Tuesdays. I don't have a problem with the, the trailer having the, uh, recyclables in it, and take away his Thursday, so that he can't go there on Thursday, and give him a Sunday. Not both days.
Okay, so in the end, it'd be Tuesday and Sunday?
It would be Tuesday and Sunday.
Um, Charlie, is there a reason you're against Saturday instead of Sunday?
Well, I think the Saturdays are usually more busier than a Sunday. You know, with all the campaigning I've done down there, it seems that Saturday's the pretty big day.
And see, um, does Sunday work for you, or is Sunday like a Thursday for you?
Uh, Sunday is, Saturday or Sunday are infinitely better than a Thursday. There's just no way I could do it on a Thursday.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure Sunday didn't fall into the Thursday category for you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Cause you said Saturday.
Well, see, if he went and picked up his-
I, I-
If he went and picked up all his stuff, oh, I'm sorry, Kate.
No, no, I just know, you go ahead, and then I'll, I'll-
If he went out on Saturday and picked up all his stuff on Saturday, he could bring it in on Sunday, so he wouldn't have a problem.
True.
Yeah, you already said Sunday's a problem, so that's, we're set there.
Okay, so question from Kate. Right now, even though we give three contracts, this is the only commercial hauler we use right now?
That we have right now, correct.
Right, okay. Two, the point of this is for safety, correct, is to stop bottlenecking and having too many people in the transfer station?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
So, to me, if-
Well, to be, to be fair, to be fair, that's one of the things we're talking about, right? It's, that's gonna be a benefit. There are other benefits, you know, to, to this company, if, you know, you might get more clients, but, but that's correct.
Okay, well, that, that's, for me, that's, this was presented as a safety issue, and I'm already very concerned about safety at the transfer station. It is literally the only place in town where people congregate. And our cases went from nine, we're at fifteen in the space of a week. And I think I'm still, want everyone there to be kept safe, even if our workers. So I'm only gonna look at this in terms of safety. I think this is not the time to, like, say, oh, isn't it great? And then add more strain on the, more people there on a Saturday. So I'm kind of concur with Charlie here that, um, there was a reason, it sounds like, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 'cause they were the quiet days. So if this is something we're gonna try out, I would definitely do it temporarily and want absolute feedback to see if it's causing more bottlenecking, more crowds, more congregating with people at the transfer station. On the weekend, because people are not wearing masks at the transfer station. Not to mention that the very opening of Governor Sununu's two-point-oh, Dr. Chan said, "Everyone in public should be wearing masks, period." So, I, I, economically, great, but if people aren't gonna be wearing masks, we're not- So, I, I, economically, great, but if people aren't gonna be wearing masks, if we're not gonna put that out, I don't want, I'm not in favor of this, if it's not safe.
Can I just ask one quick question, Mr. Chair?
It depends, if it's gonna be mask-related, I'd like to table that. I'd like to stick with, uh, go ahead, Chief.
Just a quick, I, I'm lost on, I, I know I've been out of the office one day, but I get emails from the state on the number of residents, I don't say number of residents, the number of positives, and I've never heard nine or fifteen. So, if that's the number, then the fire department, I'm sure the police department are not getting accurate numbers.
I am looking right at this moment.
Keith, it was on the news today.
It's right, it's today's map.
Okay, I wouldn't believe everything, you see... With all due respect, I wouldn't believe everything you read, because, like I said, the last numbers we had are not even a fraction of that. And the numbers that we have, that we receive from county dispatch, get their numbers directly from Conkerd for public safety. I've seen those numbers, I've asked the question, and I was told to go by the numbers that I received that are the accurate ones. Uh, I mean, that, that's for another day.
Can I call a timeout here?
Wait, wait, your numbers are larger, is that what you're saying?
Hold on, can I call a timeout here? Timeout. I'm going to, here's my public service announcement. Diane, this is for the minutes. This group is not a source, I've said this a hundred times, we are not a source for accurate numbers of COVID-19 cases in this town. They should seek out that information, residents need that, CDC, Department of Health, go there. So, if anybody on this meeting...
That's, excuse me, that's what I'm looking at.
Hold on, hold on, just a sec, Kate. So, if anybody on this call, it's the same thing with me talking about how much money the first responders are getting. So, I don't want this meeting to advance any numbers unless we're absolutely sure. We're way off topic here. So, what I'd like to do is table this part of the discussion and stay with the Newton Trash Hauling Company to see if anybody wants to make a motion to, uh, change anything about it currently. Anybody have a motion?
So, may I have two questions?
Go, Larry.
So, two questions on, on, uh, Steve's, Steve's project here. We're gonna go temporarily, just say we say four weeks. And, um, at the end of the four weeks, what is he gonna tell these customers? That he can't do their trash no more? Or is he still gonna be able to pick up those customers and do them on the Tuesday, Thursday, when he goes back to that schedule?
Well, he'd have to tell them temporary. This is a temporary procedure.
Yeah, I think whatever we put forward, um, I'm speaking for Steve right now, but I'm sure he agrees, whatever we put forward, he'll communicate that with his customers as he actually had a temporary ability to do it at the beginning. So, it'd be similar to that. Steve, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, I, I would obviously communicate whatever the policy is to my customers, and I'm not sure how I would manage that yet, but, uh, I would find a way to work, work with it, yeah, of course.
So, Matt, what would...
Mr. Chair, this is Jack Hozier. Can I make a couple of comments? Um, I think Sunday is our busiest day, I'd rather see it on Saturdays. And the other thing that really is disturbing is, we only have one contractor now. And I got nothing against Mr. St. Clair, I think he's had a nice job, comes in, takes care of everything. But I'm looking down the road for a year or two. Are we gonna allow ten-wheelers in there? Because somebody's gonna say, "Look, if we can't haul our trash with a, with a pickup truck." Uh, you know, you, you've got it, you've got a set of standards that you've set up, which I thought were excellent. And anytime somebody's gonna complain that, that hauler, we're gonna waiver and change everything's on the fly without doing any, uh, you know, it just seems to me we should do some more research on it, and this should be discussed between all the select, but not on the telephone and so forth. Those are my comments.
Uh, I'd like to respond to this, if I might?
You should go ahead.
Okay. One, when we first developed this policy, it was without knowing what type of volume we would even be dealing with. We did our best, um, educated guesses that we could to develop a policy to determine whether or not this would work. With the understanding that after we had some time to see this working, to determine whether or not we would need to make any changes. So, the board already knew in the beginning that we might need or want to make changes in the future. With that said, no, we will never allow eighteen-wheelers or huge dump trucks into the transfer stations. That's a little too extreme, even for the board. And why not? Because if you let a truck in that big, you're making it near impossible for any resident to get in there and eliminate their trash while that truck is there. And a truck of that size would be there too long.
Yeah, I, I threw that out there, Lisa, because it bothers me that we're sitting down here and making a policy change that, to me, is critical for the town. Without really doing any research and look at the ramifications, I threw that out there as a possibility. Maybe the guy's got, you know, two, two trucks that are both ten-footers or something. You know, do we count, and so, yeah, you can handle that. That's all I'm trying to say. I think we should hold off on this and hold discussions.
We're also not looking at changing the size of the vehicles that are allowed into the transfer station. We're not changing that. All we're looking at is, and not even increasing the number of days that he, that the haulers will be allowed in, just changing one of the days that the hauler is allowed in on. The other option that we are looking at right now is the ability to put the recyclables on a trailer, but only the recyclables on a trailer. And if you notice, we did ask the transfer station manager, who is the one who sees this hauler coming in and sees the effect and the volume of business that occurs in this transfer station. We asked him what he thought of these potential temporary changes.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is, if you, if you put a date on this, you know, whether it's four weeks, six weeks, whatever, it can always be changed, right?
Right.
Even if we do this in perpetuity, if, if Jack and Pete, you get back to us in a month and you say, "Oh, it's been horrible, it's awful, uh, this isn't gonna work," then we can always change it. I think what we're trying to do, without, without getting, you know, doing a ton of research, it's gonna take forever, um, we're trying to offer something to the community that's gonna help them. And I, and I think that's what COVID-19, this response and these meetings are all about. So, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that...
Oh, I was gonna make a motion that.
Lisa, let's see if yours is better than mine. Go ahead.
Okay. I would move to modify the transfer station commercial hauler policy for a period of sixty days to change the dates allowed from Tuesday, Thursday to Tuesday, Sunday, and to allow a trailer to be pulled with recyclables only.
Lisa, I thought Jack said Saturday would be better than Sunday. Is that okay with Steve?
Uh, Pete said Sunday was better.
Jack said Saturday.
Uh, Saturday would be better.
Sunday is pretty busy.
I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Can I get a second on that for a discussion?
I just did, for discussion.
Doug, Charlie?
Okay, thank you.
Lisa's right on the Sunday, because what he'll do, everybody, is he'll turn around and he'll go and pick up all his stuff on Saturday. And then he'll be the first one at the gate to go in on Sunday morning. He'll unload, and then he won't be bothering the rest of the traffic for the day.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Football starts at 1:00 PM, Steve, just remember that.
Okay. I mean, if that's the way, if I was doing it, that's the way I'd do it. I'd pick my stuff up on Saturday and be all ready for Sunday morning, and be the first one at the gate. And then he's not in anybody's way.
Look at it.
Because now he, now he's got a trailer.
Yeah, and I would just go back to what I said a few minutes ago. If this doesn't work, we need to hear from people, right? And then we can change course. But I think this is, as, as we sit here right now, it seems like it's, it's pretty good. So, we had a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, and it will allow Steve Seere to at least advertise and make it known that those who are concerned, you know, about the COVID and the proximity in the transfer station, could utilize his services, even if it is just for these sixty days.
Right.
So, people who might normally not use his service may actually take this opportunity to use his service, which would eliminate that, that, um, traffic as well.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's go around. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, and that's unanimous. So, Diane, if you could please, on your advanced calendar, sixty days from tonight, whatever the closest meeting is, make sure this is on the agenda. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll communicate, we'll see how it's going, and we'll go from there.
Should I make a temper, uh, modification to the policy to indicate the changes that were made and the deadline for those changes? So that it can be posted on the website?
Yeah, I would say, um, do, I would say to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
In that it's under, under review in sixty days, so... Anything else for this meeting tonight? Hopefully not, but anything else?
This is Diane, unfortunately, I have one more thing.
Hopefully it's controversial, because I love those.
No, it always is, it seems like. I think I have these things go, say, oh, this is easy, there's been no problem.
Right.
Okay, so, unfortunately, I have to talk about the life safety issues again at the Town Hall and the, um, library.
Okay.
Okay, so, at the library, I have scheduled it for May thirteenth. Okay, there's no change in cost there. Now, he got back to me about six o'clock, just before we can get onto the meeting. And, um, I'm estimating to finish the, um, Town Hall, the bottom floor, uh, just changing out the heat detectors just to smoke. I'm guessing, and this is using some of his numbers that he throws at me, and it change all the time. And I'm doing the worst-case scenario, where he says it's gonna take them six hours at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the labor. And I come up with a total of thirteen-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Now, that's nine hundred in labor, four hundred and twenty in parts. So, we have, we've already used out of the twenty-two-hundred, one thousand six hundred and eighty-three. So, we would need eight hundred and three dollars more to finish this off.
What's the board think?
We already, I thought we already did that.
You only did the top, we only did the top four.
Diane, was all that work in the original quote?
He nev, he, remember, he never gave a real quote, because he says he can't give it to you because he doesn't know what the labor cost is.
Never gave us a real quote because he didn't know what the labor cost was to change, to change a heat detector to a smoke detector?
Well, no, he changed it from, he changed it from five hours to six hours.
Yeah, he's thinking anywhere between three and six. So, I went six, and I'm giving you what I hope is the larger of the numbers, and it comes in, you know, less than that. Let's say, I'm giving you the worst-case scenario, I hope.
It's always the worst-case scenario.
I hope it is anyways.
Well, at this point, you have no choice, you gotta get it done, so...
Right, you're right, we have no choice. So, we do it not to exceed six hours.
Yeah, everybody should understand, these are life safety compliance issues, so, we are where we are.
All right, Diane, what was that amount again?
Okay, so, if I did my math right, we originally started with twenty-two-hundred. We've already done, we've already spent sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-three, so we have five hundred and seventeen left out of that. He's, I'm thinking it's gonna cost us another thirteen-hundred-and-twenty, so I believe we need eight hundred and three dollars.
Right.
All right, so, we've authorized twenty-two-hundred dollars so far?
Correct.
Okay, so, just to make our lives simpler, I'd like to move to authorize the expense not to exceed one thousand dollars to finish the life safety corrections in the Town Hall and the library to come from government buildings.
Okay, that's not gonna, the, the library one, we're all set. Don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
All I need is...
So, scratch the library part.
Okay, yeah, all right, good, thank you. That's fifty-one thousand to finish the, uh, Town Hall.
So, Larry seconded. So, any discussion? Hopefully not.
Don't tell them, Diane, how much we...
I'm not.
We...
You'll spend it, I'm telling you. You'll just up again on it.
It's just between us and everybody who's listening.
Yeah.
Larry?
Diane, make sure he, he comes in and does all that work in the same day, because we're not gonna pay to get that building sprayed twice.
Right.
That costs seven hundred dollars a wax.
I know.
Yeah, the, that part's already been discussed, we're not, not doing that again. Um, all right, so, let's go around. Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Matt's an aye, so, there you go, that's unanimous, so...
Tony, I think what I'll try to do is schedule it towards the end of May for that particular piece of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got two just now. Anything else for this meeting?
Excuse me, this is Terry.
Go ahead, Terry.
Hi, thank you, Matt. Um, I just wanna double-check this Thursday, and I see where that would be next Wednesday, uh, the thirteenth for the work at the library. Do I have approval to go to the library this Thursday in the building?
I think, uh, Diane, what's, what's the timeline there?
Yeah, I mean, May thirteenth is next, is a week from Wednesday, so if you wanna go in on the seventh, Terry?
Uh, yes, yes, this week, yes.
Yeah, you're fine, because he's not gonna do anything till the thirteenth.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, I just wanted to, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Right, as far as I'm concerned, you can go in any time before the thirteenth.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Pete here, um, just really quick, if I have bills at the Town Hall I have to get, um, when will I be able to get in there? Or would somebody be able to bring them to me? Or, uh, I'm not quite sure how it would work with the, uh, social discipline.
Yeah, so, I think what we're talking about is the library, correct, Diane? So, uh, it's basically per usual, whatever this usual has been the past six weeks, correct, Diane?
Uh, I don't think I followed, because that was Pete asking when he can go to the Town Hall to get his bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's basically pick up the transfer station mail.
Yeah. Is that correct, Pete?
That's correct.
When have you been going?
Um, well, we haven't been sending a lot of dumpsters out, so once every couple of weeks, but now that we are, um, I usually try and check weekly.
Okay, so, I guess, I guess the answer to that one is, uh, Mary Jo and Kim are usually out of there by five, right? Is that correct?
Six, six o'clock.
Six. So, anytime after six, you'd probably be in good shape.
Okay.
And, uh, wear a mask.
And gloves.
Absolutely. Masking laws, all the time.
Well, what about, excuse me, wouldn't, Kate here, wouldn't it just be easier for Mary Jo to leave the mail in a bag outside, so we limit the number of people in the transfer station?
Uh, so, anybody can take the mail? No.
No, no, when they're there, that they coordinate. So, when he comes, they call, this is what she does, and they just put it right there, he picks it up.
The mailboxes are right there inside the door, Kate. So, as soon as you open the door, your mailboxes are there. So as soon as you open the door, your mailboxes are there. He's only going to open the front door and touch his mailbox.
Mine's in and around the corner, not, not right inside the door.
Don't worry, this is...
Um, into the left, yeah, but it's, it's not very far.
It's not personal, Pete, I just think we, with all the cost of cleaning, the fewer people, the better.
Yeah, not a problem, that's why I brought it up.
All right, we did have a motion to adjourn.
I think we should mention it to Mary Jo and see what she wants.
So, we did have a motion to adjourn by Charlie.
Yeah, let's hear it.
I seconded that motion.
Lisa has seconded, I believe that's unanimous. Um, thank you, everybody, tomorrow night, we're going to be back with our regularly scheduled episode, um, seven o'clock for public. So, we will talk to everybody tomorrow night. Thank you.
Matt, just quick, Matt, before you hang up, can you send me the info for the rec call in ten minutes?
Yeah, I'll do it right now.
Thank you, sir, good night.
Bye.
Thank you, good night.
Night.